I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Bachmann.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Community development director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Erin will be here in just a few minutes.
Oh, okay.
Public hearings on adoption of a brownfield plan for property at 91 Arthur Street in the city of Manistee. The purpose of the public hearing is to afford an opportunity for citizens and interested parties to provide comments on adoption of the proposed brownfield plan for 91 Arthur Street redevelopment project. At this time, the public is invited to speak on the proposed brownfield plan for 91 Arthur Street redevelopment project. No action is anticipated at the conclusion of this public hearing, however, this matter is on the agenda for consideration later this evening. Is there any public comment?
Hi, I'm Bruce Matthews, 63 Arthur Street. Bayview condos is right adjacent to the south end of the proposed 91. Then with me, Julie Beardsley. Julie, what's your address?
65 Arthur Street.
And Bob Cook.
51 Arthur.
So, we're a small committee. We had a...of the 18 owners. And we have just a couple of concerns. And the main thing is, is that you just get the...number one, we're all for it. We're tired of looking at a pizza building, a derelict building that's been there for 20 years. Something has to be done. And that's not a bad idea, what you're doing. So, that's a good thing. The other thing is, is on the one parcel, and you can pass those out, it's the sliver parcel. And in your brownfield development plan, it is the legal description, it's parcel number 27508. It's the small one. And in this packet, it's the last page has got the map on it.
Thank you.
But that packet is a covenant that says that the...that that sliver parcel, there was a 2008...it used to be part of Bayview property.
Thank you.
Then there was a 2008 court judgment that that is used as residential only in perpetuity. It runs with the land. That's sort of our little buffer. So, that's our concern. There's things happening. You've got the brownfield site, you know, it's included in the brownfield. And we personally don't think it should be included in the brownfield. Now, things are fine, it's just on the rest of it, but it just...that one parcel, we don't believe it should be in the brownfield redevelopment because it's with the land, its use is residential in perpetuity, not commercial. Not commercial in a residential zone, but residential. That's on page three of your little packet there, right at the end. And it says exactly what it is. That's out of my deed. It's in all 18 of our deeds of everybody's in the condos. And it's also in the deed of that property. So, there's 19 deeds with that in there.
And it's recorded in the registered deeds office as a deed restriction on what is classically known as the sliver. This is very narrow, about 153 feet north and south, 3401 and 54 the other. And the declaration of restrictive covenant, the deed restriction, came about as a court case. And it was designed specifically to protect Bayview condominiums from commercial inclusion. And in speaking to our advisor consultant, he thought that it may not be incorrect to include this in the brownfield redevelopment plan, but he did have some concerns. It's how do you consider a seawall and the walkway? Do you consider that a residential use, which it would have to be with a residential restrictive covenant? And so, yeah, so I'm not sure you want to be including costs for residential improvement as part of the expenses in the brownfield plan, although they weren't divided by parcel. I would have some concerns about that. Our primary concern is that the procedure for the developer is correct. We're concerned about that. Because if it is correct, it best benefits the developer and it best benefits the residents of Bayview condo. I'm the closest residential owner to this development, so.
That's good enough.
I can't think of anything else.
That's it. If you've got it, we just...we don't think it should be in the brownfield. That piece right there.
Any questions or concerns we could answer?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, your time, appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Bridgette Vanderhoff, and I am the developer of the property. So, I'm happy to be here and meet with you. I'm not some big developer from someplace else. I belong in this area, have been in this area since I was a young girl, and I've talked about that before. Just to clarify things, that strip is not in the brownfield. Just...we just didn't...
Yes, it is.
No, I understand, but it's not...when you said it's not separated out, we don't have any intention of touching that strip of property. When we put in to fix the seawall, it's the seawall that everyone's complained about. It's falling in, it's floating out, and all of that. When we put in the project to the...and I think you guys have a copy of that, because we were up here before. And I apologize, I didn't come prepared to speak with this, because I thought we were just talking about the brownfield. But when we applied to Eagle and Army Corps of Engineers, we only applied for the very end part of that. So, we knew that strip was there, and we knew we're not touching that. We're not fixing it, we're not touching it. It's from that strip to where the ships in my property end is what we're trying to repair. And I don't have a map with me. Does anyone have...you have the map on there?
Yeah, we've got the...
Yes. The left part of your map. So, try to bring mine, if I can.
They also have...
Oh, there it is, here. Okay.
They'll be able to follow.
So, if you look, that little strip of yellow that's right here, that's like a solid seawall. It's not falling in. There isn't anything that really needs to be fixed on it. It's this yellow piece, right there. If you could allow me, I'll say where you see the docks are falling in, and it's kind of a mess.
We don't have the yellow...
Can we project that?
The color.
Over there.
This yellow strip right here.
Okay.
Is their piece. This piece down here is what we're fixing.
Okay.
And it's where the docks have all fallen in. And I know the last meeting I was here, there was a complaint, because one floated away, and I gave out my phone number, said, "Call me, and I'll bring my tritune and rescue it." But I can't touch it until we get approval from Eagle and from the Army Corps. We have Eagle's approval, we've gone back and forth, we've made sure that we followed all the procedures for the wetlands. We are required to plant some beautiful foliage and some native plants, and to fix the seawall with the appropriate products, right down to the type of rocks we had to choose. So, there is a very specific plan to make sure that we're following what we're supposed to be following with that.
Okay.
So, it starts here.
I don't want that picture either.
Guys, you have to come up here and speak.
This is what...
Here, now I can point to it, so sorry. So, this is the strip they're talking about, right here. This is what we're fixing there. Everything that we do on this property will be behind this. And I sent Teresa a copy of the new rendering, and what it actually shows is where the restaurant is here, this will be some patio stone out here with a few tables. But there is actually plantings along here, they're box planters, to separate from that walkway. So, we were making sure that we even had some separation, so there wouldn't be people wandering onto what is considered a residential walkway. Everything else that we do at the other end of that property will draw the public out that way. So, the overhead garage door will be right here, which will open it up, so you can go in and out and eat. There will be picnic tables and things over this way. There should be nothing that would draw people this way or this way. Any type of activity that we have will be over here with picnic tables, hopefully a couple of fire pits, and the second bar area, which is a phase two or three. So, hopefully that kind of clarifies what we're doing. And I am very aware that, you know, it's...next door is residential. We'll follow whatever the city says we have to follow. The lighting plan has been followed. The driveway plan, we followed what MDA and what the city has recommended that we follow. I don't know, is there...I think...did I answer the questions about that?
If you guys have any questions.
I did, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't come more prepared. I didn't know I was doing this. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, this public hearing is now closed. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items limited to five minutes.
Hello, my name is Anita Schaefer. I am one of the organizers of the Manistee Fall Festival. And I'm here to publicly comment on Agenda Item E, which is the consideration of an extension to the Manistee Fall Festival, which is on October 26. My group has been planning this fall festival for several months now, and my understanding is that Third Coast Boutique has put in a special request to shut down Between Division and Green Bush and add their own activities during the event. We already have permission since, I believe it was August 7th, to shut down Between Poplar and Maple. We're also using the Manistee Inn and Marina parking lot, which is private. Third Coast Boutique has never reached out to the organizers of Fall Festival to request collaboration, to join in with the planning, nothing. I found out about this after the special use permit was put in, and it's disappointing to say the least. They're really wanting to do their own event, and I appreciate that they want to do more and make it bigger and better, but I actually have the unique opportunity that I own a business on the street that they're trying to also shut down, and they've never reached out that way either. So, they haven't...the Emporium is on that same street. And I personally, as a business owner, don't want that street shut down. There was a reason why we picked the street we did. It's been done before with the TJ block parties. It's been proven that it's a central location that disrupts traffic minimally. And, you know, honestly, we want it to be bigger and better every year, but we want to collaborate together. We don't want an event within an event. I mean, I have people that are...have given money, organizations. I have a banner that's going to be on the archway of River Street. How would that look as they come down and there's another event before you get to our actual event? I mean, it just...I would like to collaborate in the future, and I welcome them to collaborate in the future and join us. But this is a separate event, and we did not...we don't approve this, and we don't...you know, basically, I approve the denial of this, I guess, is what I'm saying. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is William Travis, 196 Washington Street. I'm the owner of Third Coast Boutique. There's never been a mention of this. The only way we found out about a Fall Festival was through Facebook. And Tara from Talk About It did go down and talk to Ms. Schaefer and mention something to her about this. This is not trying to do a different event, what we were trying to do. We didn't know it was Poplar, we thought it was Green...they were going from Maple to Green Bush. All we're trying to do is connect right in, and like Anita said, bigger, go bigger. I grew up in this town. I remember River Street used to be shut down during the fall. There used to be a Fall Festival here when I grew up. When I came back here after my 20 years in the service, the only time it shut down is for the sleigh bell. That's it, and the Fourth of July parade. All we're trying to do is bring more people downtown and make a fun festival for everybody. That is the whole purpose of it. It's not trying to step on anybody's toes, it's not trying to take away from something else that went on. It's a two-way street. She could have came down our way and talked to us. Nobody ever talked to any of the business owners down our way about it. No one has brought it up. So, it's a two-way street. Communication's two-way. Her saying that, you know, we didn't talk to her, well, she never came to us to talk to us. And like I said, we're not trying to step on anybody's toes. We're just trying to collaborate or, you know, put something together for the whole town. Also, we're looking at is, you're shutting down one little block, but you want all the businesses to give out candy. Well, that's a bunch of kids running up and down, going across the street, and you've got traffic going down there. And you're going to have a lot more traffic in that little congested area, because you're having that one section shut down. So, we're looking at it as a safety issue, too, with children running around. You want trick-or-treaters to come up and down.
Can you please stop...can you guys please stop talking? Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You're going to have kids, you know, children running up and down the street, trick-or-treating to all the different businesses, and you're going to have traffic. Personally, I think at a safety level, the city should look at it in that aspect. A safety level of, you know, really, the entire River Street should be shut down for this event, for safety reasons. Because you have children, there's going to be going from one end of the River Street to the other end of the River Street, and you know how kids are, they get excited, and, you know, yeah, parents are going to be there with the little ones, but they're not going to be there with the midsize and things like that. And, you know, we're on River Street. I see cars go up and down that street, and some of them drive recklessly. And then we got those goofy trucks that are nose in the air, that I don't know how they see, but it's a safety thing. And like I said, I'm not here to step on anybody's toes or try to take something away, hard work for somebody, at any means. I'm trying to connect it in so that it's one big fun event for everybody. That is the whole purpose of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No, 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 you're fine.
Brian Chick, 276 First Avenue. I see you're going to have another discussion on park turntables. I did call Teresa and Tracy, and they never got back with me. I had some ideas. My feelings are, yet, we shouldn't be putting them in a residential area. You just heard from these people, they're going to have planters put in so that it keeps their residential sidewalk separating. Right now, we have a daily rental in back of us, and the only thing that separates us is nothing, right now. So, they can walk into our yard, which we've had. And that's the thing I'm talking about, is this should be in a business district, it's a business. And when they had Meet the Forum for the candidates, I brought up the question to our senator, and he said that the city has the power right now to stop it. They can do it. You guys, one of you's can make a proposal and go through and put it so that they can't have them in residential area. And that's what should happen, because we're losing our neighborhoods. We had an incident in our neighborhood, and I caught it for a neighbor of ours, it was a lifetime neighbor, they had a gas leak. I was walking by with my dog. Is as the residents start to leave this neighborhood, there's not going to be that. There's not one of us checking on one another like we do right now, or catch when somebody steals something and that. So, I just want to speak on this, that one of you's can make the proposal, and one of you's can second it, and it can start the ball rolling, because he said you have the power to do it. And then, the money you put out for that program, you can use that to catch the people that are violators of it. And make sure you get big enough fines, so it's something that stops them from doing it, not this piddly $50 or $100. I'm talking a couple thousand the first time, and maybe $5,000 the second time. I guess that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Tara, I don't talk about it. So, I just wanted to speak on the special event permit that Third Coast had applied for. So, first off, I'm kind of Switzerland here, I was just trying to connect things, you know, and figure out. I honestly would love to be part of it, too. I kind of feel as if our site is serving as a parking lot for an event, but then again, I respect Anita and everything she put into it, totally get what it is to organize an event. I do see a safety issue, because, you know, I watched last year, kids do run back and forth, back and forth. I have children, you know, they're running all over the place, too. They're part of my restaurant handing out candy. So, I see both sides of it. I do think, first off, like, there's a few questions that I would have as a business owner on River Street and a taxpayer. First off, what funding went, like, what city funding, what funding, what DDA funding went to this event? And if any did, why wouldn't the entire downtown, entire River Street be involved in it, I guess? I feel as if, like, there's many businesses on our end that could benefit from being part of a festival like this. It is centralized in front of one food service establishment, which is great. I totally support them, totally support what's going on. Again, I am a huge...whether it happens or not, I am a huge advocate for the event altogether. But I do see a benefit of shutting down the whole street. I see a benefit of all businesses benefiting from walking traffic, from kids being able to run without having to worry. You know, there's so many benefits to it, but there's also a benefit to keeping it. You know, I'm...I just want to say in both ways, it's just, you know, it does seem like it would make more sense to make it more of like a sleigh bell event and make it bigger. We're all...there's so many business owners that I've talked to and around me that are willing to, like, throw more into it if we knew there's going to be more walking traffic. And again, I'm not trying to step...I don't want to step on anything. I love what she has done, I think it's incredible. Fully supportive of it either way, I will do what I can. But to me, it would be easier if, you know, I didn't have traffic driving back and forth to set things outside and do things outside. So, that's kind of where I'm at. I did go to her and talk to her, but I didn't go on behalf of Third Coast, I just went to say, "Hey, like, what is going on? How do we..." Again, I kind of was in the dark about the Fall Fest, but that is my fault. I don't go to meetings, I didn't reach out, just started to kind of dabble into that. But that's kind of my take on it. I support what they're trying to do, but I also support the Fall Fest and get both sides. But just kind of wanted to say that I can see where a safety thing would definitely...having kids would definitely be a thing, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Consent agenda, all items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters prior to approval. Any per of council may have an item removed and taken up during a regular portion of the meeting. Items include a couple of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, balance sheet. At this time, council could take action to approve consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
No.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Presentation of a donation to Great Lakes Burn Camp from the city of Manistee Fire Department, root beer float fundraiser.
All right. Okay, so, the mission of the Great Lakes Burn Camp is to provide a unique experience that promotes healing, self-esteem, competence, confidence, and general well-being for burned, injured children. That is what the Great Lakes Burns Camp is all about. They are primarily volunteer-run organization comprised of caring adults, whose goal is to provide unconditional love and acceptance to all burn survivors who attend their camp. They are dedicated to creating a safe place for campers to grow and bond with other burned survivors. Many of the campers have needs beyond their injuries. They can provide all the kinds of items to campers through generous donations, including clothing, toiletries, coats, boots, and other items. Campers at their summer camp will also receive free backpacks and school supplies. So, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the Manistee firefighters who organized, staffed the root beer float fundraiser, raising an impressive $2,277.50 for the Great Lakes Burn Camp. I also wanted to express my gratitude to the sponsors, Little River Casino, Myers, Manistee Planning Commission. Your support made this event possible, and to everyone who made individual donations, and of course, to those who purchased the world's most methy root beer floats. Your contributions are deeply appreciated. And with that, we present a check to Michael Ongnick.
Characterize Redevelopment Sites. Teresa Waldo, Andrew Stafford.
Yes, and what do you want me to bring up? Let me get... I just want to say good evening and thank you for listening to us this afternoon or this evening. I'm Teresa Waldo, the community development director, and I want to introduce Andrew Stafford.
Yep, so, I'm Andrew Stafford with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm the Director of Economic Development and also the point of contact for the Downtown Development Authority. And this is a chance to review the Redevelopment Ready Certification Program that the city's taken part in since 2016, just to get us all familiar with the benefits of it, kind of why we do it, what it is, and then also the priority sites. I just upfront want to thank everybody who did partake in that survey. I know it wasn't perfect, I got a lot of really positive feedback on that survey, just things we can tweak for next year to make it a little more seamless and maybe a little more apparent as to what properties we're talking about. So, just to kind of give a...
There's the down arrow.
Oh, down arrow?
Yep.
Okay, there we go, thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
But just to give a high-level overview of kind of where this presentation's going, we're going to start off just talking about what Redevelopment Ready Communities is, Manistee's history with it, kind of why it matters, and where we are now. Me and Teresa are actively working on this program to make sure that we hit our recertification by January 2025. So, just to go over this program, Redevelopment Ready Communities is a technical assistance program that the state's put on to really promote transparency, efficiency, in a streamlined development process within communities across Michigan. The way this is actually practiced is the state came out with six best practices that have a number of tasks underneath each one that if a community partakes in the program, they kind of make a commitment saying, "Yep, we're going to try to hit all these tasks and accomplish these best practices within our community to make sure that, you know, we're running at, you know, top capacity in making sure that our processes are transparent and that they're efficient." So, anybody coming into our community is really able to navigate easily. It's not the state saying, "Oh, you know, we need growth mindset where you're going to have giant apartments buildings." It's more so saying, "Hey, we just want all our communities to be running efficiently and to be, you know, welcoming and easy to navigate, even if a community isn't looking for some type of high-rise development," right? So, just a map of all the communities that are currently in... So just a map of all the communities that are currently engaged in the program. There are quite a few. And just take note that Manistee is the only one in the county, the City of Manistee is the only one in Manistee County that is fully certified. And we were actually the 10th community in the state to become fully certified back in 2017. So that's pretty, pretty remarkable. We were an early adopter of this program. So going over the history of the Redevelopment Ready Community Program in Manistee, we started our engagement with it back in 2016. We completed the engagement in 2017, became fully certified, got access to all the benefits that come with certification, which we will get into on the next slide. And then every four years, you have to kind of review the best practices and the items that you executed to accomplish the best practices every four years to make sure that, hey, are we still practicing these? Are these still relevant? It's just to keep them on the forefront of our mind in making sure that we're still kind of doing the best we can to make the development process efficient and transparent. So again, just going back to 2017 when we made this accomplishment of actually becoming certified. So where we're now, we have 18 tasks across six best practices that need to be reviewed, revisited. Some of these just consist of looking at the document, maybe making some changes to links and dates, and others are complete overhauls of documents. So, and the reason kind of I'm up here talking, by the way, is because the chamber is help, it's within our contract for economic development that this is a big piece of what we assist with the city. Because it's, it's a lot to, for one person to take on. So being able to support Teresa in doing this document creation as well as identifying ways we could even improve our, our processes and zoning and economic development and the way we market ourselves and just constantly having those documents in front of us and seeing how they can be tweaked to be even better. So some of the benefits of RRC is, it's kind of an inherent good. You know, when we talk about doing these best practices, these aren't things that were arbitrarily chosen. They were picked because planning professionals in looking at other communities across the country, MEDC or the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, kind of identified them as, these are ways we can promote growth and be more transparent and be more efficient. Second, we have technical assistance once we become certified. So that's access to the state, some state staffers to help with this document creation, help review our documents and help review some of our development processes. And just having that extra set of hands and extra set of eyes with people who have been across the state looking at other communities, you know, just having access to those individuals is extremely useful. And then finally, funding's probably the biggest reason we care about this program. We get access to redevelopment-ready funds annually. And then also, when it comes to applying for other state dollars, being a redevelopment-ready community really helps with applications such as the RAP grant that just came out. This will help us get extra points on when we apply to other state grants. So definitely a benefit to our community to be taking part in this. And then kind of turning over to the priority sites, this is a big one. And again, this is where that survey came into play. This just helps us, you know, talk with property owners and identify sites that, hey, where can we maybe promote a higher and better use? And where do property owners want to see, you know, hey, I have a blighted property that might be underutilized right now, but I want in the next three years for, for some, for it to be in a different place than where it is now. And this helps just earmark a couple of those properties. So you pick the top six every year and it, it turns into our focus area from a property standpoint. So this certainly helps me in my position identify what property owners are looking to, you know, kind of put up their property and say, you know, I, I think there's some, something better could happen here. And then also just give a focus where, you know, when I'm able to sit down with developers, be able to say, hey, you know, these are the sites that we're really eager to see movement on in the coming years. So number one was 160 Memorial Drive. This is a old sale lot site. A new business just went in there, so don't pay too much attention to this, you know, because obviously, you know, there is movement in that, but just within discussions, you know, with, with the property owner here, there seems to be maybe a future for a higher and better use. It's a very large lot, you know, within the city. So obviously, definitely want to see that business that's currently just started up thrive in that location. And we're doing all we can to support that. So that's why this one might kind of just be in the back burner. However, on the survey, it was, it ranked the highest. Number two, the World Hardware Store that we all know, in talking with that property owner, he's also very eager to see movement on this property. So I think this has been a, a top two contender for the last several years. And I think it should definitely stay there and hopefully over the next year or two, as I get my feet wet within this community, we can see some movement on that. Number three is the old Music Vault building. This is currently on the market and definitely should be a top contender and continue to be a focus on saying, how can we get somebody to, you know, take on this property that actually has a vision and the means to execute, you know, something feasible on this property? Not just have it turn hands and have it sit for another, you know, 10, 15 years. So this is definitely a priority site for myself. But then also you guys have indicated, and that everybody who's taken the surveys indicated that this is a priority site for the city. Jones Dairy Four, and then I'll just whip through these last five and six. The Chamber Building is the last one, and I'm really excited about having that on our top six just because it gives us, you know, we have complete agency over that property currently. So it's really on us to have movement on that property. So definitely excited to see what kind of ideas for future development come from that property. But that's really all for me. Is there any questions regarding RRC, where we're at, and me and Teresa's role in making sure the city hits recertification by January? Again, we have to get through those 18 tasks. We've been working with the MEDC and that's something that me and her connect on practically weekly, just touching on RRC, making sure we're making headway on that.
So there was several sites, we only, we only do the top so many, correct?
Yeah, so the top six. So, you know, it's kind of 10 sites. I did what my predecessor had done. So and I kind of talked to some MEDC staff, and the survey and getting public input actually isn't even necessary. Somebody could just blindly choose, these are the six sites. However, just because best practice is really to engage as much as a community as we can when we're identifying those sites. That's that reason for the survey. But making sure that, you know, we're kind of have a more limited box and 10 whole properties, just making sure if we can limit it to five or six. Yeah, it makes it a little more tangible, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else?
Are these sites, I mean, just identified as of this survey that we just did?
Mm-hmm.
Or?
Yeah, so it was taking past surveyed data. And then also with the survey we just did, historically, there isn't really going out into like the public realm, right? It's, it's trying to get as many formalized boards in that kind of input, formalized organizations inputs, but it's not just for a vote of the public, per se. If that's something we're interested in, we can definitely test the water next year. Again, this is kind of a first go, so any feedback is welcomed.
Is there, so now that you've identified, do you have any prospects for any of those spots or has anything come up or?
Yeah, yes. I mean, the ones on the market, obviously, the ones on the market, it's a little easier to talk to the property owners. The ones who aren't on the market clearly show an indication that they're not really eager to see movement. So it's a little harder to get in contact for two of those properties. There has been significant interest, just not, you know, nobody's kind of gone ahead and bought the property. But moving forward now, identifying those as our focus areas, we can be much more strategic and put a lot more of our effort into how we go about marketing those at the state level. And then also kind of working my network and other people's network within the community to, who, you know, have the ability to actually make movement on some of those projects, right? So working with like construction companies and people who kind of have that financial backing where, you know, you're able to execute a three, four million dollar project, right?
So the state actually does help with kind of getting the word out and making...
Yeah, yep, yep. So they have a whole redevelopment-ready database, in a real estate database that, you know, priority sites, you know, with the permission of the property owner will be uploaded to. And then if the city and other entities within the community want, you can get the state to support like an RFP, an RFQ project, but you kind of have to have the permission and consent and have the property owner really working with you. But, you know, they'll help package that. If, if there's a viable idea out there that somebody wants to go through, the state will help create kind of renderings and package it into a pretty RFP and put it out.
The old city civby club at Ninth and Vine, is that on your list at all?
I don't believe that is. I'll, I'll mark that down, look, look more into that.
Because I don't know if the hospital bought it, or that they opened the old hospital.
Okay.
And that was part of their thing. So I don't know if they own it or if it's a free...
Okay, and what was that property address?
Civby Club, Ninth and Vine.
Okay, I'll look, I'll look into that. Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Consideration of a Brownfield Plan for 91 Arthur Street Redeveloped by Developer 9199 Arthur Redevelopment Company LLC. Earlier this evening, a public hearing was held on the purpose proposed Brownfield Plan 91 Arthur Street Redevelopment Project. The City of Manistee Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has approved the Brownfield Plan. Public Act 381 of 1996 requires the municipality where the project is located to also approve it. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution approving the Brownfield Plan for 91 Arthur Street Redevelopment by 9199 Arthur Development Company LLC contingent on entering into an agreement, into a development and reimbursement agreement with the Brownfield Authority and developer at a future date. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
I have a question. It's kind of unfortunate the city attorney isn't here tonight because I guess my question on this is, I've heard from residents at Bayview. We've heard from the developer. I sat at the planning commission meeting, so you did a really lovely presentation and I got a lot more. But I guess I'm just wondering, is there any negative consequence that could come out from this if we approve this now and then those residents have a problem and it ends up being a legal thing? Is there any thing that could come back on this as counsel?
There's still some, you know, there's a development agreement that still needs to be approved. There's final site plan approval, so there's still some more steps, but this is kind of one of the steps we have to take for the development.
My name's Kirk Perschbacher. I'm the Brownfield Consultant for the City of Manistee or Fishback. To answer your question, the parcel is still owned by the developer. It ha, it will always have the restriction that's on it, so that, that can't be lifted without a law. What the Brownfield allows it to do, excuse me, if it's included in the plan is that if there are ever any activities that are needed, it allows them to be eligible for reimbursement, but it doesn't ever change the use of that silver. So that, the use of that will always stay the same, whatever that restriction is. So whether it's included in the plan or not, there's no activities that are anticipated on it, but it does allow the developer if anything is needed. But also if there's, if that property gains taxable value, let's say, then their increment for the whole development to help pay off the other activities is, is lessened. So there's really no negative ramifications to it because it doesn't affect that restriction. That will always...
Okay, and I, I think part of it might have been, Brownfield has changed over a period of time. So when somebody said, well, it's not being used commercially, you know, now the, the rules for Brownfield development change. It doesn't have to just be commercial too, so...
Correct, and it, it doesn't ever affect the use of that property.
Right.
Because that will always have that restriction in mind.
Yeah, yeah, no, very supportive of the project. Just wanted to make sure if we approve that tonight, like, if there was some legal issue, we weren't putting ourselves in the midst of that.
No, no, because if for some reason everything, anything did happen, you can always abolish a Brownfield plan.
Okay.
It would never come to that case, but there is that option in Act 312 to allow that.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to say that I'm happy that they pointed that out to us. I didn't personally pick up on that, but I think the, the questions have been answered and I think they're, I'm satisfied that that's been recognized and addressed and it's not going to be an issue, and I intend to support the Brownfield.
And I, I piggyback that like usual. The developer, I appreciate you listening to their concerns. That, that shows vested interest in the project and I really appreciate it and I know they do too. Thank you.
Yes? Thank you. Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac. Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing the city manager to execute necessary steps to utilize Ranger Bid online auction services for the sale of surplus city vehicles and equipment. The city has utilized the services on an onsite auctioneer to dispose of surplus vehicles, equipment, and materials for many years. The current trend in municipalities is to dispose of property through online auctions. The online process improves access to interested buyers, including loyal local buyers, and allows the city to dispose of items in a timely manner. At this time, council could take action to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary steps to utilize Ranger Bid online auction services for the sale of surplus city vehicles and equipment contingent on city attorney approval. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac. Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of an extension to the Manistee Fall Festival Saturday, October 26, 2024, from 12 to 4 P.M. Third Coast Boutique is asking for River Street to be closed from Division 2 in connection with the Fall Festival, which is scheduled for October 26, 2024, from 12 to 4 P.M. Downtown merchants are hosting downtown trick-or-treating and activities for children. Business owners in the Division Street, Green Bush section of River Street would like to add to the activities with the street, including a bounce house, apple bobbing, base painting, and cornhole. Additional request was not coordinated with the organizers of the Fall Festival, which was approved by council at August 7, 2024 council meeting. The DDA does not endorse this new request as the street closure plans do not support their mission to promote economic development and create an inviting and collaborative atmosphere in the downtown. At this time, council could take action to deny the extension to the Manistee Fall Festival, including the additional River Street closure request. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Safety is getting mentioned a lot tonight with trick-or-treating, and I guess I see that. I mean, like, we see that probably in our neighborhoods. There's always kids that aren't watching necessarily, but have there ever been any issues? I mean...
Not to my knowledge. We, we haven't shut down River Street, to my knowledge, for this event. What I would ask for council to consider if they decide to approve this event, that instead of having a block closed, a block open, and a block closed, as Mr. Travis mentioned earlier, we shut down entire River Street, therefore we don't have vehicle traffic co-mingled with kids.
Right.
That, that would be my recommendation if you choose to move forward and approve that.
I would just comment that, listen to both sides. I, I don't like that there's a communication issue downtown, but I really feel that the safety issue is more important than their lack of communication. And having been down there with my grandkids and been down there with the police department, I think having the whole street closed beats the heck out of having it parked closed. And I, I intend to vote no on this and support the full closure.
I, I agree with that. I mean, I, I think it's hard to beat safety. And I think at the end of the day, I'd rather see more collaboration, which we don't necessarily have control over. So maybe there's ways to improve that next year, like through communication, because somehow there's, somebody's always going to, always going to say that they didn't know about it, so maybe there's ways to improve that. I'm not faulting anybody for that, but I guess I'd rather see the whole street closed and then that just eliminates that whole safety component than have something happen and say, we wish we would have.
This motion doesn't cover, close the whole street though, right? We're still, there's still a gap.
Can we?
Yeah. Yeah, so we need to, we need to vote on this first because there's a motion on the table to...
The motion on the table is to deny.
To deny. So if...
Well, somebody made a motion, but nobody has seconded it.
I seconded it.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Sorry, didn't hear that.
So this is, this is a motion to deny the current, but the current is not to close the entire street, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
So I think that, I think that it is a good idea maybe for next year to close the entire street and have everybody collaborate. But there is ways that everybody knows what's going on downtown. There's DDA meetings, there's the Tuesday morning merchant meetings, River Street business owners have a Facebook page. So, I mean, everybody could collaborate. I think that closing it down, closing the whole street down is a good idea for this, but maybe not this year. Yeah.
Is that something that we could work with them on? Like, could we go back and make that recommendation and...
So I think we, we did a closure, expanded closure a couple of weeks ago. We did get feedback from some businesses, Bluefish, Golden Stag, about that closure. And they feel like the DDA was getting complaints about the, the location specifically, Division 2 Poplar. So that kind of led to more discussion with the DDA about this approval process. And so we're kind of fine-tuning that process. Part of it is the DDA recommending or denying it to council. Ultimately, it is up to council. So we're kind of fine-tuning that approach with the DDA right now, but this is the first one. We're starting to see more and more requests to close River Street and we're kind of finding, finding out about the DDA's appetite for the amount of closures. And I do think it makes sense to, if you have... And I do think it makes sense to, if you have someone working on an event such as the Fall Festival or Sleigh Bell, I think it's kind of one of the issues, not just the location, but piggybacking on, say, Sleigh Bell, do you do a closure up another street? And so I think it's just making sure that these conversations are had before, you know, a couple of weeks before the event. So that's the conversations that have been going on. But we do have deadlines about events being submitted, a certain amount of days before the event. We plan to be more stringent on that this next year, but we're seeing these become more popular, so it is something we're working on.
And I actually think that's a good thing. I mean, people want to come downtown, and people want to do things, and, and business owners downtown want to be involved, and I think it's all really a good thing in the big picture.
Anybody else?
So we're, the motion is just to deny this link, this closure and extension for this Fall Festival. Heather, would you please take role?
I just want to clarify, so this is denying the extension from Division to Green Bush?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Bachman?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
No.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
No.
Councilmember Martin Paniac?
No.
So that motion failed.
Okay, consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on Board of Review, Compensation Commission, Harbor Commission, Planning Commission, and PEG Commission. Mayor and manager appointments require a motion and a council vote to support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives the majority support. The following applications have been received. Compensation Commission, two vacancies, one term ending 9/30/28 and one term ending 9/30/29. Purpose Established Compensation for City Council Members' Mayoral Appointment, Shelley Membertu, 347 Second Street. Harbor Commission, two vacancies, terms ending 10/31/27. Purpose Advisory on Marina and Harbor Development Issues, Council Appointment, Thomas Swedenborg, 562 First Street. Planning Commission, one vacancy, term ending 10/31/27. Purpose Reviews, Master Plans, Zoning, Site Plans, and Development Issues, Mayor Appointment. At this time, mayor and council could take action to appointments as noted above. The Compensation Commission, I would like to appoint Shelley Membertu, 347 Second Street, to the Compensation Commission, term ending 9/30/2029. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac? Motion approved.
Thank you. Is there a nomination for Harvard Commission?
I'd like to nominate Thomas Swedenborg of 562 First Street for the term ending 10/31/27.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac?
Yes.
Nomination, nomination passed.
Thank you. I would like to appoint Shelley Membertu, 347 Second Street, to the Planning Commission, term ending 10/31/27. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now we'll have a report from Ms. Karen Mau from the Parks Commission.
And if I may, Mayor, the point of order with, so the motion to deny the closure, we would need a motion to approve the closure, if there's, if it's going to be closed. Just want to make that known to council, so.
You need a motion for the whole street?
If the, if the council's going to, the council needs to approve the closure, so if it's going to happen. To deny it, it would deny it, or you, you, you voted no to deny it, but there was no vote to approve it, so just.
Make a motion to approve the request to close the street as directed or indicated in the request to close from Green Bush to Division, right?
Well, Poplar is the, the police chief's recommendation.
Mr. Travis's motion, you're essentially approving closure of River Street from Division to Maple.
There we go.
Okay. That's my motion, thank you.
I'll second that.
Hold on, let me grab. Okay, so our motion, I have a motion by Councilmember Bachman, second by, and that is to close from, and that was.
River to Division.
Okay.
Maple to River.
Maple to.
River, Maple to.
It's going to be from Division to Maple, the whole.
River and Maple to Division, okay.
What are we doing?
Okay, so now, I have a motion on the table, I have a motion from Councilmember Bachman, second by Councilmember Pratt, to close River Street from Maple to Division for the Fall Festival.
We probably ought to put the date and time on that. October 26, from 12 to 4 p.m.
10/26/2024.
Yeah, I have a question. How does that work with the liability that they already have for that? Okay, yeah.
So if you would vote, basically what you're voting on would be Mr. Travis's request to shut the remainder of River Street down and combine the events from 12 to 4. That is his request, agenda request. That's essential what you'd be voting for. And these have already been pre-approved, and it's for one block. To shut down River Street would be to accept his request, and it would be one, I don't know if it's combined event, but approve his event request. Does that make, does that bring any clarity?
Right, so he'd have to go through the same, like, liability coverage and.
He already has, he already has.
Perfect.
They're concurrent, they're going to be in the same place.
Correct.
Currently, same time, not necessarily coordinated with each other.
Correct.
But there's going to be activity up and down the whole street.
Right.
Perfect.
Wonderful stop, sis.
So, okay, so are we clear then? We're just, this additional motion that you are just doing today as council is just to close Maple Street from.
River Street.
River Street, excuse me, from Maple to Division. And that is for, I could just say on October 26. I don't even have to include the Fall Festival. If that's something that we don't want to include that name, I could just say on October 26, from 12 to 4. Does that work?
I just feel like this is being rushed.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, even to address what Ms. Schaefer just said, she's, you know, she went through the, the appropriate, well, just let me speak, please. The appropriate channels with the correct timeframe. I absolutely understand what Mr. Travis is saying, but again, Ms. Schaefer has everything printed out. It's online, it's, and I, you know, I'm torn. The safety part of it, he got me on the safety part of it. If it wa, if that would not have been brought up, I would, I would be voting yes or no, yes, however, I would not be approving it. The safety part does concern me, but also I absolutely see Ms. Schaefer's point as well. I think it's going to be one of these times, I think that no matter how we vote, we're not going to make everybody happy. But for me, I absolutely appreciate what you've done, and safety is strictly the only thing that I'm, that I'm voting on. I'm not.
Okay, I'll just speak it all, because this has been going on longer than even trick-or-treating downtown with no safety issues for many years. I only, this is the first time we've asked to shut down things, and the reason we asked to shut down was for safety reasons, so people would gather in that one area. Merchants have been trick-or-treating.
Sorry, we can't. We get it. Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
No.
Mayor Sullivan?
No.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac?
No.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We will have a discussion. Did not forget about you, Ms. Karen Mau from the Parks Commission.
I'm not certified by a cooker, if you like cooking things. Thank you. You all ready? Good evening, I'm Karen Mau, Chair of the Manistee Parks Commission. And before I say anything, I just first wanted to tell you all, thank you for attending our annual bus tour. And thank you to Jeff McCula for narrating. We hope it's annual, and we hope you come next year as well. It was, it was really great to have you. And also thank you to council members Pratt and Grabowski, excuse me, for attending some of our meetings and giving us feedback and ideas. We appreciated that as well. And also thank you, Mayor Sullivan. She's been a supporter of our events and activities as well. So we just really appreciate your engagement and your support, so. Should I point at you? I don't know. So just saying, we are a full commission, we have seven members, wide variety of backgrounds. I think that's a real strength when it comes to problem solving and creativity. And if you see the map, that's pretty locationally accurate. We are kind of distributed equally throughout the city, with two on the north side, two east of the highway, and then three to the west of the highway. So no park is ever forgotten, even when we're focusing on the beaches. All those, all those other parks in all corners of the town come back into our focus. So if you plan that, I think that's brilliant. Otherwise, it's just a great coincidence of the universe that we're well represented throughout the town. We meet monthly, this is just kind of a, how we've organized our activities over the last year. But we do have monthly meetings, they usually run about two hours on average, they're kind of lengthy, but a lot gets done in those meetings. They're often attended by members of the community foundation, the Sands Park Teen Center, the MRA, men's softball. There's just a wide variety of people that come. We would welcome you at any of them to toss around ideas with us. Let's see. And they are on Thursdays at 5:30 p.m., third, third Thursdays, excuse me. Thank you. And I can't go forward with talking about the parks without mentioning our great award for Best Beach in Michigan. And of course, that's a collabora, a collaboration between so many different groups in the city. And I hope that you see that thread running through the activities of the Parks Commission, that we try to collaborate not just with, extensively with Jeff McCula, the DPW, and the Parks Department, but also lots of different entities throughout town. And if I can put your focus on the upper left picture for a moment, those self-watering planters were kind of the inspiration of Karen Peltola, one of our commissioners. And she worked with the DPW last year to get those installed. DPW is great about watering the self-watering containers, making sure those water levels stay up. And Karen continues to plant seasonal plantings in those in collaboration with Spirit of the Woods Garden Club. I think Wheezy's did some donations, so even something like that is, is just a lot of different entities coming into play. So if you see me saying these are Parks Commission achievements, just note that there's a lot of people involved in absolutely everything that we do. And of course, across the river, we can't forget about Fifth Avenue. There's DPW and Spicer collaborating down in the corner. And the Parks Commission didn't have as much to do with this project as I think we would have liked, but our major contribution, I think, was advocating for the height of the wall. We're listening to community feedback in a lot of what we do, and there was concern that people sitting in their standard cars wouldn't be able to see out over the wall, eating their Dairy Queen and not have to get out of those cars. We were also big advocates for having the color of the beach wall. We're looking at design consistency throughout town, and I think I hammered Jeff McCula on that for about a year at every meeting, saying, Jeff, would you please make sure that the wall matches the beach pavilion over there? And he came back finally with, not only is it going to be colored, it's going to have these great beach waves. I was really excited about it, and I just, I think that project turned out so well as well. It could have been best beach as well as our other beaches, so. If I can move forward then, we did do some hands-on projects this year. The biggest one, I think, is this community build over at Morton Park and also at Duffy, which I don't have a picture of. But it really was truly a community build. It was Parks Commission, it was DPW, I think council members Pratt and Grabowski were there. The railroad was involved, representatives from Sinclair, I think I said DPW, but Parks Commission, of course, was there. And that just turned out really well. And if you forward to the next slide, Heather, the Parks Commission also painted the old equipment. There's Liz Lasky and Lainey Roska there, painting the swing set. But even that was not just the Parks Commission. That was working really strongly with both Jeff McCula, Brandon, and Tanner of the DPW. They provided material support, they taught us how to prep, good techniques to use. They were there setting everything up the morning of painting, and if you notice the slide stairs there in the center. Tanner, actually, when we expressed concern that we wouldn't be able to rehab those old stairs, within two weeks, he was out there with fresh refabricated stairs, brand new, maybe they saved the treads, I believe, had it there installed on painting day and ready to go. So those, I, we just couldn't ask for a better group of guys that were there to work with, and we thoroughly enjoy working with them. And I hope they feel the same way, because we, we think they're great, so. And that's just the finished Morton and Duffy parks with Duffy Park there on a fall soccer evening. Every inch of that park is used and appreciated. Over on the right, that's the New Merrick Ground. I think there were 12 children on it at one time, but it was hard to tell, they were spinning and jumping on and off. But it's really used, it's really enjoyed. And if you go on to the next slide, we weren't done yet, we had a lot of extra paint left over. We thought Morton's turned out really well. So Duffy Park here got a new swing set coating of paint that matched the new blue shade structure over. Just have a nice little before and after shot bonus project. And if you forward one more, when we were scouting Reg Shemeric Park for a couple of our park events, we realized there's actually a swing set. You can see it kind of on the left, tucked back within the trees. I think a lot of us didn't even know that was there, so we took our little paint can, we still had paint left over, and we still have paint left even after this project here. Just kind of another bonus we decided to throw in there. And I think Jeff McCula just told me, they also used some of that paint at Mac Park. So it's the never-ending bucket of paint goes really far. We're hoping to get some more. It's the best paint I think we've ever used, so. This is something I started calling eyes on the park. And basically, this was the idea of Liz Lasky when she was Chair prior to me. We divide up the parks to maybe two to three parks per Parks Commissioner each month, and we report on each of those parks. Not meant to be criticisms, but more of a conversation starter. It could include maintenance, community feedback, ideas for the future of the park, ways it might function better. And these are just two of the projects that came out of that monthly project. The power washing of the Lighthouse Park sign and the new bleacher boards, they're, they're new boards and they're stained. And those details are noticed by people, both through community feedback, when we're requesting out in the parks, just talking to people. And sometimes I overhear conversations, sitting out there watching soccer games, but they are noticed, they are appreciated. And I just want to say that the addition of another full-time park employee has really helped increase the level of care in our parks. You can see it, you can feel it, we just really appreciate that, the level of responsiveness to requests, you can tell. And I, I think you all saw that when we were out on our annual bus tour, the, the parks are looking really great. And again, those are not hands-on projects that the Parks Commission did. They were conversations, usually during our meetings, between the commissioners and DPW, Jeff. And they just, they're amazing over there, so. Good stuff is going on. So if we can pivot from projects, we also are doing events and activities in the parks. This is our second summer holding those events. They've become pretty popular. They've been well-received by the public, our, gosh, we're collaborating with different groups during those as well. Mainly that was done to try to bring people into the different parks that they might not usually frequent, to kind of get people to spread around town and, and experience all those different parks with unique and interesting activities that we may not typically see in the parks. We hit seven different parks, unique parks this summer. I think we had eight different unique parks, separate from those last summer. So we're trying to spread it all around town. It's working really well. This was our storytime in the parks with the Manistee County Library. We had four of those, highlighted Morton Park there. And it was also the idea, I got to call out Jeff McCula, because he had the great idea that we should use these events to highlight the areas we want to draw people to. Say, we have Morton Park recently refurbished, we highlighted that. We wanted to highlight Reed's Park's history that we learned about on the bus tour and through Mark Fetter prior to that. So we, we kind of did our scavenger hunt based around the history of Reed's Park. So it's just a really interesting way to bring people out. It's free family fun in the parks, and it's something I think we'd like to continue to do in the future. And, oh, sorry, there's like four slides. All of the different storytimes in the parks at different locations around town. Our, our record was 58 at one of our rock painting storytimes in the park. This is our park art drop, which is a scavenger hunt in the parks. If you haven't heard, the prize is a local artist's work of art. It gets people out. It gets people out, you know, they don't know which park it's hidden in, they have to follow the clues posted on Facebook. And you can see they look pretty happy. We had three winners. We did that twice this summer in two different parks. And then the final one is, I think, Tim O'Connor, holding a CPR in the park that was done with the Men's Senior Softball League, although it was open to anyone. There's Liz and Tim there, working on a patient. And it was very well-attended. It was, did I mention, at the Lions Pavilion? So, again, spreading it around to all the areas of the parks. The Parks Commission, this is just to let you know, we collaborate with a lot of people, whether it's through events or just through conversations right now, speaking with the MRA about how park usage could help them, as well as us, the future of those parks. Letters of support, we're writing to different grant agencies for different boards and commissions. Just a lot of communication going on between lots of different entities. I think we need to go one more. Coming soon, these are just some things that the Parks Commission is currently researching, working on. You'll be hearing more about a lot of those in the near future. And we just want you to know that not every idea works out. This was a great idea, actually, suggested by the NRBC that we tried out. We just were offered the extra, I believe it was Blossom Boulevard flowers we had left over, and we thought, "Well, DPW is going to turn the soil, we're going to plant them, DPW is going to water them," but it just didn't take the climate or too harsh a condition. Something just didn't work out. So, we're going to have to work on that and find a different solution if we want to continue that. Storytime in the parks dates kind of drop off when people start thinking back to school, so we're going to have to front-load those events to counteract that. And just not to end on a negative, the next one is just a few of the park highlights that appeared in the news advocate, because we didn't want to end with bad stuff. Are there any questions?
You had a good year. Thank you very much.
It was fun. Thank you.
Did you guys ever decide if you were going to, I know Jeff has talked about it, at First Street Beach where the gazebos are, taking out all them weeds there? Some of those trees are really weeds.
The trees are weeds.
Growing up.
I don't think that's come up in discussion yet, but we can certainly talk about that. And I would defer to our Parks liaison here, Jeff McCula, for that.
We've talked about this before.
Have you?
Taking them out.
Okay, okay. I wasn't in on that conversation, but I'd be happy to look into it.
But there really are weeds, because I've had them growing in my backyard that I had to take out. And they grow underground.
Do they?
That's really grow.
Okay.
I know Jeff knows about that.
Thank you. Okay. I'll ask about that next time.
Thank you.
Teresa Waldo, Tracy Davis, on short-term rental discussion.
Hi, I'm Tracy Davis, and I'm with Housing North. And I'm going to kick off our discussion. At the last meeting on September 17th, we talked about having additional data and moving forward on a contract with Granicus. So, we did move forward on that with your approval. And they were able to run a report, a very quick report for us. And it is a snapshot of one day in the month of September. So, this is to just give us that sort of snapshot of that one day in September of this year. Once we are able to fully implement the program with specific address identification, we'll have even more refined data. So, I just want to, you know, this is a quick, one-day snapshot. So, there were 254 listings representing 166 unique rentals just in the city of Manistee on that one day that they looked at.
And that is including those areas that we are not going to include, correct?
It's all-encompassing of the city of Manistee.
Okay, thank you.
So, what they found was the average nightly rate on that specific day was $188 a night. And then, I did think it was interesting that they were able to identify the type of unit, so 95% of the units that were rented or available to rent were an entire home. And we'll be able to get much more extensive, in-depth information, again, one-day snapshot. So, the number of short-term rentals listings have grown 23% in Manistee over the previous year. And that's just listings. So, the actual growth over the prior year was 19% for the individual, unique rentals. And what they mean by that is, sometimes people will rent or list multiple times one unit in different publications. So, that just kind of gives us some general data to frame, or at least to be a little bit more informed. And again, we'll be able to take the training and run reports and get more than just that one-day snapshot. What I did want to note in some of the discussions that we're going to continue is that we did have recommendations from the ordinance committee that talked about condos, the exceptions that we talked about, the condos, lakefront, the DDA exemptions. So, that is in the section, and we did update the ordinance, and Teresa's going to talk about some updates. But that would be in the second section, the Short-Term Rental Standards, Section E, Page 4, that it talks about, we redefined what those exemptions would look like from the limited amount. And kind of talking on that limited, that was also one of the recommendations. That 30 number came from the ordinance committee. And we're going to kind of discuss and kind of frame, because we talked just in general about a percentage versus a number, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later, just to throw out some more information for you to ponder and marinate.
So, I'm going to talk about a little bit, sorry, my name is Teresa Waldo, Community Development Director. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the feedback that we had on some of the ordinances. So, we talked about our capped areas. We also talked about the registration would not transfer at the sale. We talked about increasing the fines. So, our first violation, we went from $50 up to $250. From the second violation, we went from $250 to $500. And then, our third violation, we went from $1,000 to $1,250. The next, there would be no limit on common owner. And then, short-term rental hotline, we talked about an after-hours would be to dispatch. And then, also during the day, it would be the rental inspector or staff. Another thing we talked about was the sleeping occupancy. It's not been defined by bedrooms, so that was in the ordinance. It was number six. We originally had limited to two people per number of legal bedrooms. We decided to take that portion out. So, that part of the ordinance reads, "The sleeping occupancy of a short-term rental shall be defined by the International Property Maintenance Code, which is IPMC for the state of Michigan, the county, and the city building codes." The next, we can bring up news and updates of frequently asked questions, please. I'll have those up there. I don't know if you'd like me to review each of those, or if you'd like to take a few minutes to read those and discuss any further.
So, I did have a question on one of those, because it did come up at the prior discussion. So, I think the city manager had said, you know, somebody can rent their house out for two weeks or less currently, correct? So, now, we're saying that would be considered a short-term rental, right?
So, any period of time under a month is considered a short-term rental. So, two days, if you are renting less than a month for consecutive days, it's a short-term rental.
So, if I remember correctly, though, if they rented it for two weeks or less, they wouldn't have to be? Wasn't there some exception with the law right now, or something with the state? Like, I thought you said people are allowed to do that.
So, looking at the language, is any period less than a month is considered a short-term rental?
Okay.
And again, all of these are going to be reviewed by our new attorney before I come back to the next meeting, which the next council meeting will be October 15th, and we'll be having those done then at that time. Did you have any other questions on any of those?
Well, I have a question on something you mentioned. It's on the sheet, though.
Okay.
So, you mentioned the short-term rental hotline, that would like go to dispatch?
Yep.
How would that work? Because there's been times that our police force numbers have fluctuated, where we've been understaffed. I don't know that we've ever been overstaffed, so let me take that back. But we've been understaffed. So, I guess I'm just wondering, how is that going to work? Because you might get somebody that's calling about a non-emergency thing.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
So, does our dispatch have the ability to take that on right now? I guess is what I'm wondering.
The way I'd see this work, because it would be a call to that staff or the rental inspector, and probably be a prompt if this is an immediate issue, please contact dispatch. But I would think the hotline would be someone working in the city offices, but I would encourage them to call dispatch if it's something immediate.
Yeah, because I'm thinking if it's like a safety thing, or feels like there's a danger, they're probably going to call 911 anyways.
Correct. And then, that number would be just during the day, the work hours, eight to five Monday through Friday.
Okay.
But aren't we putting a plaque on the house that we agreed to? One time with the contact, whoever to contact?
Yep, that's what we have, our Be a Good Neighbor guide, and that's listed on there.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, so we have our emergency, emergency, and urgent care, the hospital phone number, the police department, and non-emergency phone numbers. So, also there, there's a line where that individual will know what the addresses of the location where they're at, so it's handy right there. And all of that would be required when they do the rental inspection. They would see that, and it would have to be posted.
We had talked about fees, and I see that you guys increased them or are recommending that. I guess my concern with that is, and maybe we can have a discussion on that. So, I understand there might be times where the property owner themselves might be contributing to that problem. They've been aware that there's an issue in, like, their repeat offenders. But for the most part, you could have a different renter there daily, depending on if you rent out daily, or if you say it's a week, or however long, because I guess people set different rent agreements.
Renters.
Yeah. Would those fines be paid by the person renting the property? I mean, I guess, I kind of view it as, like, we're not renting to minors, and most property owners aren't going to say, "Come have a big party at my house," or "Come," you know what I mean? So, it feels like, I mean, at some point, the property owner should be involved, don't get me wrong. But if it's a first-time offense, would that go to the renter? Or would that go to the property owner? Because the property owner might not have any clue about it.
Right. What I would believe what would happen, it would go to the owner, and that would be the owner's responsibility to take that up with their contract, or whatever they have in the works with that.
Okay.
Yep. And maybe one of their clauses or something, that's a stipulation that they would be signing the contract with.
I'm just thinking, some people will probably have to revamp.
Yes, definitely.
Their agreements. Because I see that both ways, you know what I mean? Like, there could be a potential situation where this one is a repeat offender numerous times. So, the property owner might need to adjust something. But it could also be a one-time incident, and the property owner might be more upset than we are, you know, so to speak. So, okay.
Have any short-term rental operators reached out? I mean, we're getting a lot, you know, again, it's one of those divisive, you know, topics. You know, 50 people hate it, 50 people love it. Have you had any contact with any operators for any input in this?
A few people have been calling and saying that they don't like the rules, or why do we have to have the price? You know, they're talking about the price. The biggest calls that I've been getting is, people want to purchase homes right now, and they just don't know where they're going to be sitting. With if they purchase a home right now, will they be part of it, or by January 1st, they wouldn't be able to? So, that's kind of where it's up in the air right now, and we haven't really had a full discussion on what's going to happen with that either. That's on our list here to go over and talk about. But overall, not many bad reviews, not a lot of discussion. There's been a few, but not as many as I thought.
Have you reached out to, like, the people that run the Airbnb's and rentals? Because Tim's been here several times.
Right. No, I have not, not at all.
I, as a council member, perhaps. I mean, that would kind of make sense to get his viewpoint on that.
Are we just leaving this open, that everybody can buy and sell a house, or are we going to limit the amount of SPRs that we're getting? Because I see one on First Street says, "Coming soon," another one. I mean, they're just opening up left and right, and we don't have any control on this.
So, that's, I mean, the ordinance committee kind of gave us some direction, so that's why we're talking about this now. But yes, we're planning on, there's the exempt areas, and then we were talking about 30 being the cap in the neighborhoods. And then, there was discussion about, should it be a percentage? And we have some discussion later, but yes, a transfer would drop off. So, this is to kind of set a cap and limit. That is correct.
Because, I mean, how do we control each district if we're only going to put so many in a district, and then all of a sudden, we're already behind as it is already?
So, I think the way it was going to work, and this is part of that discussion, is if you're operating a short-term rental, it's almost, that would be, how do we put it? You'd be able to register, you'd have to meet the requirements, but then, at a transfer, it would drop off. So, it's almost, we're allowing existing to continue to a certain degree, but at a transfer, it would drop off if they're in one of the areas that are capped.
So, I think part of that discussion in the updated ordinance was the timeline for, sort of the cutoff timeline. If you're currently operating a short-term rental, as of 9/3/24, when this discussion began, then you would be able to apply during that open, short-term deadline period to register. If, no, then you would drop off because you failed to register. But I think part of the discussion that we were hoping also to have is, what happens if, like somebody said, "Coming soon"? What happens now with the people that are after the September 3rd deadline? Like, what do we do with those people? Or somebody that might buy, you know, a month before the registration deadline and anticipate doing a short-term rental, but it's after the 9/3. So, we want to hear from you, or then go back, you know, the ordinance committee have that further discussion about what we need to do, or what needs to happen in that sort of gap.
Well, the 9/3 would kind of, I hesitate a little bit on that, because there have been several people I know that have purchased properties, had discussions with realtors, checking ordinances, things like that. You know, they're sitting here, they've been following. They're like, you know, if it's a 12, 15, I think is, like, we threw out a number, like, a date in December or something, I think, or January. They're like, "That would be no problem." But some of them are waiting for people to move out of the home before they can even get it inspected. So, they've already kind of made a huge investment. And I don't know how, if we don't have something in place, you can go back and say, "We're going to just pick this random date." Like, in my opinion, since it's been the wild, wild west here, and I'm not faulting anybody for that, I mean, everybody's got to start somewhere. We just haven't done that necessarily. We've encouraged it, but we haven't necessarily put it, like.
Right.
In black and white. You know, I've reached out to, I think, just about everybody who is running short-term rentals as a management company and had conversations. I have not had anybody tell me that they are opposed to an ordinance. That makes you have them inspected for safety, that makes you make sure that you're taxing them appropriately, and you're treating your neighbors well. Because that's their reputation, too. Nobody wants to run a bad business. You're not successful if that's the case for very long. But they are hesitant when you start throwing numbers out there versus a percentage, or when you're saying, "This would be the cut." or when you're saying this would be the cutoff date versus that.
So I think two things. I think the reason the nine-three was suggested was because that's when formally it came to the council for the first time. That, and again, we're not ingrained that it has to be that.
Yeah.
This is why we're having this discussion, that, you know, what should it be? What's the best thing for our community? Where does that need to be? So again, starting somewhere, it's up to you to decide where that ends.
It kind of would make more sense to do like a thirty or forty-five day after the ordinance is...
Yep, just like a law.
I think if you give that timeline, and then if somebody misses that, then that's on them. Like, they've had full opportunity to jump through the hoop, they've known about it. I'm assuming we're going to put it out in multiple ways. Then I don't think they have anybody to blame but themselves. But like, I do hesitate when, like, somebody bought a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home. That's a significant, you know, and they're going to pay non-homestead taxes on that, which is more money coming into the city. And they asked all the right questions beforehand. So I kind of view that as like penalizing them if we were to say like the nine-three, because they wouldn't need that.
I can, yeah.
You know, I'm just, I'm not finding fault, I'm just talking. I think this is just talking points, but, I mean, I guess at some point, there needs to be a consequence for some people. But if you have people that are trying, then I think we have to try to work with them.
I think that sounds...
And I think things happen like organically. Like, I mean, when I've talked to many of the managers, they're like, you know, one year somebody's renting, the next year they're not because they got a divorce and that property is up for sale, or they're using that property more, you know. When you look at Airbnb, like, there's a property on Dunes Drive, it's ten thousand dollars a week. That's probably not being rented as much as a house that's a hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars a night.
Right.
You know, and they have to rent it five times to pay their taxes.
So I think the, one of the things I did want to mention, because I was sitting down, is I have had calls from people that operate short-term rentals, just a small handful. And their concern more was, I want to make sure that I'm meeting the standards and doing what needs to be done. They weren't upset, like you said, they understood entirely. They had questions about, well, I'm a rental, I was inspected under rental, and now I'm...what happens now? So do I have to pay again a rental fee? Which was in some of those questions that we answered based on some of the calls that Teresa had shown, you know, the new updated Q and A.
And that is the one thing I've heard from, like, consistently. And, you know, I think there's still some bad blood out there with our previous rental for people that were jumping through those hoops and kind of felt like they were getting the runaround. But they're like, what's going to be the difference if I already have it inspected? Is there going to be a different standard of safety for a short-term rental versus a long-term? So they're like, if I have mine already rent, like, inspected and it's good for three years, it feels like we're just jumping through the hoop and paying more money to the city when it's already been inspected and it's passed. Like, they're like, you're not going to probably come in and say, I have to have twice as many smoke detectors. You know what I mean? So they're like, they're like, again, they're like, whatever it takes, I'll do. They're not complaining, but they're just saying, I'm wondering what's different? What's going to look different with a long-term rental safety inspection versus a short-term rental inspection?
Well, I think each one of those, you know, what Jerry or the staff goes in to do that, they're going to be able to see and pull up that address, see when the last one was. Possibly we could do a pro-rating or something along that line and work with the people. We're not here to say that everybody has to start over, this is what you got to do. No, we're going to work with each of the residents or each of the property owners and do that.
I'm happy to hear that, because I think there's a happy medium. But of course, it's the unknown that scares people, you know what I mean? So I think it's kind of trial and error, and you have to give it time so people can adjust. But I guess I don't want everybody to get upset and decide they're going to flood the market with phones, too. You know what I mean?
I did want to just touch base on the percent versus the number, just because that was a discussion, which I want to continue. The committee had recommended, the ordinance committee had recommended thirty. But just to kind of frame some data for you, we have in the city of Manistee three thousand five hundred and forty-four housing units, residential housing units, and this is based on census data. And one thousand nine hundred and ninety-six of those are occupied housing. So if you take, just using a percentage, just going to grab one out of air, if you do two percent of our occupied units, the one-nine-nine-six, that would be a cap of thirty-two. So that would be thirty is, you know, a slight hair under two percent. So if like you jump up to five percent, you end up with ninety-nine-point-eight. So just to kind of give you an idea where those numbers end up falling. Other things?
No, so I'm hearing the increased fines, I think is a thought that we lower those, the first one, a little bit more. I know, I know there's a concern about, you know, there's basically people are renting. It's not necessarily owner potentially, but...
No, but it's up to the owner to make sure. We're taking into consideration the, you know, the poor short-term rental operator. What about my neighbors? What about Seth's neighbors? What about Aaron's neighbors? I mean, that's, and I agree, it's a balance. I think I would not, it's going to encourage the rental operators to make sure they know who they're renting to and to make sure the rental operator knows the neighbors. If there's any inkling of a problem, to get on the horn to them, to get it taken care of. I'm good with that amount.
I think if we're upfront with people on that, they can fix their contracts. And, I mean, if I got fined for my renter, I would just have that in the contract to pass that fee along.
Right.
I mean, so as long as you understand that, I mean, you can, I don't know who's doing contracts if people are writing them themselves or having their attorney, but you just have your attorney put a clause in there and...
Behave.
Well, or if I get a fine, you know, however it's going to be worded. I mean, I think some people are going to have to wait to see how the city words that to then take that language and put it in their contracts.
So, and I think that goes along with what our next steps are. And so obviously with the new attorney, we're going to have those steps and the ordinance and all of this reviewed with them. And then, like I said, next council meeting, we'll bring it back to you with the possible ordinance adoption. And then hopefully we can commence in 2025.
Okay.
Can we see the ordinance fully written before you bring it to us to adopt? I mean, I don't want to just see it the first day at the next meeting.
No, absolutely. Yep. Whenever you get your next packet, is it a week at a time? We'll have it in your packet.
I'll send it with a Friday update.
Yep. Okay, great. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Citizens' co...yeah, sorry. Jeff McCula, Cardboard Recycling.
Just a few updates for you. Since we discussed the short-term solution to at least the cardboard recycling, we've put together a management plan, we've submitted that to PCA. And so we're just waiting to have that back. Again, the thought was to host that trailer in the DPW yard. We'll put it where all the vehicles that we're going to auction off are currently sitting, so we'll have room for that. And then we would staff that, starting at two times a month, four hours each time. And we'll have a DPW employee there to check, you know, addresses and help educate and assist. So we're waiting to hear back from PCA, but that's the update on that. Just today, we got our quote from Republic Services on the curbside. So we're going to need to sit down and just go through those numbers and look at the terms of that. But that's a huge step, so we're moving along on that side. And then also, excuse me, last week, the city manager met with a representative from MCC, and then I met with the representative on site. When they pulled that PCA trailer from their new barn, they hadn't secured the property yet. So that barn is full of material. And so their plan is to get a volunteer workday. And the PCA trailer is back there. It's back there to be able to empty that barn out and do a final cleanup. And then we've offered to provide a dumpster at that location for contaminated materials that exist in there. So hopefully, they'll be able to close out that piece of it soon.
What are they going to do with the trailer with the plastic? That's all that junk is breaking apart now and blowing around.
Yeah, so all that stuff will have to be picked up and put into that dumpster.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens' comment, this is an opportunity for citizens and attendants to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Limited to five minutes, letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Good evening, Council. Mick Schumansky, three-three-two Fifth Street. Just something came up at one of our council, at our meetings with the Planning Commission, where a family, a young woman, was trying to start a child daycare business in her own. And if you're not aware, we're about eight hundred childcare slots short in the city of Manistee. So with that in mind, for that young lady to open up her childcare business required her to have a special use permit because she's in a residential area, pay a thousand dollars upfront with no guarantee that it would be approved, right? Because it's a commercial business. Short-term rentals have already been determined by the state courts as being a commercial business. Yet, how many times has somebody come forward with their thousand dollars and a request to be able to do that business? I don't know of any, right? So there's something wrong. If we can't allow a family to run a legitimate childcare business, which is basically six children or less in a family. And when I grew up in Maxwelltown, everyone's home had six kids or more, right? So we have to really kind of put things in perspective. What would you rather have, a childcare center, a childcare home that helps the entire community, or a short-term rental? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Campbell?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Bachman?
Oh, ma'am.
Mr. Smith?
One thing I have, and I'm just very excited to see the Kennedy School project kind of rounding the corner and coming to a close. I know the tennis courts were kind of a little bit of a contentious item. That area looks beautiful, the sidewalks are going in. I cannot, I wish I was a little kid and I could go to school in the nice new school, but that looks great. So that's all.
I'll save my comments for other times, it's kind of late today.
Okay, Mr. Pratt?
I just wanted to thank the Parks Committee. Going to your meetings is always a pleasure. You guys, the collaboration is just wonderful, and it shows. Thanks to Jeff, and I agree, adding the extra Parks employee has made a tremendous difference. I did have two residents reach out to me with concerns at Third and Oak. It's the large apartment building. If you go down the alley, there's quite a mess going on.
They're in the process of eviction.
So they didn't, the neighbors don't know what's going on, but they're like, it's going on hours of the night, so. And then, is there any way we can check in at Third and Walnut? That gentleman has had a construction permit for a year, and there's been absolutely no progress. And that property has a history of being blighted, and neighbors are complaining that nothing's being done, and they're just wondering what's going on with that.
So a ticket was issued in with a court, mandatory court date for that?
For Third and Walnut?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And the last thing I had was, I voted no on the consent agenda because I did not feel that the closed session meeting minutes accurately reflected what took place at closed session. So I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Mr. Grouse?
Are we considering ordinance for cats? People are complaining about cats. We did it years ago. They talked about it, they didn't push it through. Are we doing anything now?
I did put on a list to discuss in our next ordinance committee.
You know, Josh, we're looking at, we're going to bring that to the ordinance committee to see if there's an appetite. You're right, and so we had a situation, in fact, we were having a situation where there were seventy cats taken out of the house in the residence. And years ago, we had issues with cats, and we had a city ordinance crafted. And so my position is to see what other communities are doing and then bring it to the ordinance committee just to see if they have an appetite to make any changes based on something that's a growing concern for municipalities. Because there's not a lot of solutions for it. And we like to be in the solution-oriented business, but when it comes to cats, there's not a lot of solutions out there. If you look at the state legislature, clearly they treat cats and dogs differently. So this might be something we bring to the ordinance committee with maybe some recommendations.
Good thing.
Are you done, Joe?
What I'd like to know is, who changed with the rescue runs out of town?
Turk, can you say that again?
What are we doing with the rescue runs and going out of town?
Chief Hurner?
As far as the rescue runs coming out of town? They do typically, the numbers for, that I've been researching currently as far as aid given and aid received. And the amount of aid that we go out of the town to help the township runs at about sixty percent. And the times that we need aid to come in and help us from other agencies is around about forty percent. That is slightly better than it's been in the previous years. It was closer to like a seventy-thirty, but it is still about a sixty-forty split of we go out sixty percent of the time, and then we have agencies come in and help us forty percent of the time.
But are we going out like we were to Hoxville and Arcadia and all that?
Uh, yeah.
We are?
Yep. It was, I believe it was yesterday, we requested, a person was having a medical problem in Onecoma. So just yesterday, we went to Onecoma.
I thought me and Mr. Bachman had brought that up, that we're leaving the town open, and where were you out in the county?
Yeah, that's one of my concerns, too. It's, you know, we are vulnerable every time, every time, really, we get any type of medical call or rescue call. Any rescue call that we respond to, we average about fifty-three-minute round trip time. So regardless of where the medical call comes in at, the location, every medical call we get, we are left with no responders. That uses up our entire responding force, so for fifty-three minutes. So about fourteen-hundred calls per year, about four times a day. So about four hours a day, you know, we're at max capacity as far as our ability to respond to really any type of emergency.
I thought, Bill, weren't you having a meeting with the hospital and they were going to try to cut this down?
So we've been having, I think it's monthly meetings with them, or?
Yeah, that's correct. I actually have one tomorrow. So there is a regional transformational meetings that we're currently having with the hospital. And what that does is that gets us together with the hospital and MMR. And what specifically those meetings are doing is they're measuring the amount of times that the hospital is requesting transfers, transferring patients from their hospital to other hospitals. And what that does, that puts a greater strain on MMR and keeps them busier. So as they get busier, they're less available to cover calls within the county, which stretches us a little bit thin because we cover them. So it's kind of the snowball effect of us covering them and we covering them. And it goes back and forth, whatever. So the most of what it says, all of our agencies are thin.
Well, I realize that. They had a call one night at eleven o'clock where the guy was having a heart attack, and they wanted him up in Travers right now. All the buses were gone, and they took and said one was coming back from Travers. And they didn't get to the guy's house till about four in the morning.
Yeah.
That's poor service, if this is what the hospital is doing to us.
And that, so responding, I mean, timely ambulance service is difficult. There is a shortage of paramedics just nationally, really, and on a statewide level. But yeah, it's a concern of mine of covering all these different types of calls also.
Because I ran ambulance, if Mr. Bachman remembers, the city ran it. In fact, we were contracted with the funeral directors at that time, and we ran. And I'll tell you, I made better progress than what they're doing nowadays, so.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Joe? Joe?
Done?
I just was wanting to know what's going on with the bridge.
The one thing that we've been made aware of is that they, MDOT plans to put an epoxy, a special epoxy coating on the deck. And then they are finishing up their riveting process, which I think the city manager sent out a short video clip of that. So they are planning to do a full week closure of that bridge in order to complete those two pieces of work. It was originally discussed for next week. However, we have, I've expressed concerns that our detour route on Washington Street is gravelled for a portion where we tied the water in Storm sewer and on Lincoln Street. So we're working with the engineers and with the contractor to try to get at least that stretch of Washington paved prior to their closure. So it looked like they were going to move it out to two weeks from now. But I just received a message today from the state that they're trying to get all their contractors lined up. And so it, we're not certain when that's going to happen. But they're proposing to close it for, to all traffic for a week.
Well, that's going to start the backup.
What's that?
I was going to say, that's going to back up to the Fall Festival now, which we're closing down.
Will it be fully open when it's done though, Jack, after that?
That's, but I hate answering these questions because this was supposed to be completed in April. But that's what the expectation is. I certainly won't personally make promises, it's not my project, but that's what they're telling us.
It's going to be closed for boats too, right?
Uh, there's a marine closure that'll happen for two days while they're doing the deck work. And then, but they want the rest of the week to be able to do the rivets. And so it's, I think it's a two or three-day marine closure. So they already had that permitted through the Coast Guard for next week, but they're working on revising that now.
There'd be a new permit for that, actually.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.